Okay, sorry about that. Just a little tech difficulty there. And let's see this. Welcome everyone. Good evening. I'd like to open our meeting in the Kool-Aid by Lonnie Olson Chong. Thank you Lonnie.
Father and heaven, we gather today as members of our community and grateful for the opportunity to be here and we're grateful to all those who are willing to show up and participate and for the betterment of our community, Father in heaven, and we ask you to rest those who are presenting this evening that may be a benefit to all of us and we may take it back to those who are not able to be here. We ask anyone who are on their way would be in safety, to keep us safe after we're done and take us to our various homes in safety. This is our prayer, the name of thy son, Jesus.
Oh, thank you for that. All right, start really start a little pick up there, but welcome everyone. My name is James Houston. I'm the president of the Wyoming Community Association. Thank you all for joining us here this evening. We are here at Tutu's house. As we connect with presenters and viewers in a hybrid setting, so we have a couple of our guests online here as well. So thank you for being here. I always encourage you to follow, like and subscribe to the Wyoming Community Association on our social media accounts. You can also find relevant information up on our website at wymanetown.org. We do try to keep our accounts active and up to date. And this evening we're streaming both to YouTube and to Facebook. And in this recording will be made available for later viewing. And at this point, I'd like to recognize my fellow board members, our vice president, Mary Beth Lake, our secretary, Nancy Carter Smith, and our director is Patty Cook. David Greenwell. Whitney Harvey is not here with us this evening. Lonnie Olson Chong will be our timer in the back here this evening. Riley Smith's out there checking everyone in. And Christopher Long, who's also here as well. I'd also like to take a moment to thank our outgoing treasurer, Jeremy Madrid. Jeremy, without question, jumped on board, helped us manage and grow our reach during the last couple of years. Especially assisting through the challenges brought on by the pandemic. Jeremy, we value your leadership and your dedication to Wyoming community and we wish you the best in your next adventures. From all the new services to the community. Thank you, Jeremy. And of course, on behalf of the Wyoming Association Board, we're grateful for the support shown by you, our community members, to hold these town meetings. I thank you for your interest in joining us at our last meetings and viewing and sharing any of these recordings as well. And we're grateful for the generosity of Tutu's house. It's been important for us to connect and hold our meetings back in person. All in the past couple of years, so it's wonderful to be back in person with everyone once again. Wyoming Community Association is a nonprofit organization that strives to promote open participation by all the Wyoming community, develop leadership, support the smart growth of the region. And if you'd like to support the work that we have done and help continue our effort and connecting with the community, or you're more than welcome to donate and join as a member. You can connect with Riley up in front, or you can visit our website, wymanetown.org for more information, connect there and send us an email at wymanetownassociation@gmail.com. All your contributions and your membership allow us to reach out and connect with the community in this setting and support the work that WC has done for over sixty years. So mahalo newe. And this evening, our goal is to continue the conversation of infrastructure and gain a better understanding of the numerous responsibilities of our county department of public works. We're also spending time with our softball police officers, our council members, and a special guest this evening to share about the community work and ongoing upcoming and ongoing upcoming events. We have allocated time to the end of our agenda this evening to share your questions with our guests. We also appreciate us always receiving questions ahead of time. For viewers online, please use that live chat to pose your questions and we'll do our best to collect those and share them with our guests here this evening. And for those of you attending, if you would like to have a question for our guests, we have some note cards we can always pass out, or we'll call anyone appropriate. So to start things off, as always, I'd like to welcome Captain Jeremy Evangelista and Community Police Officer Justin Cabantin to share some updates with us. Welcome officers.
Good evening, everybody. Good evening, online people. Let's see, so May. We're gonna kick off summer pretty soon, graduation season. So we put a little reminder in our newsletter, hey, please, let's all get through this graduation season, celebrate responsibly, mindfully. Let's not introduce any tragedies. Let's not start off the summer that way. So let's push that out there to everybody. Celebrate responsibly, celebrate mindfully. For our district, we've had some personnel changes this month, effective this month, so we've had some people transfer in from districts such as Kona and Kohala. And we've had a couple of people from Wyoming get promoted to sergeant detective. So they've left our district. And then we've had a couple of transfers in, I said that already, a couple of transfers out, sorry. A couple of people left us for Kona and Hilo. So you see a couple of new faces. All season people know, they all have at least a star, so they're not rookies by any means. So they know what they're doing. When I hand it off to you and you can go over the crime, crime trends stuff.
Thanks for having me. Couple announcements, we are gonna do coffee with a cup, gonna try Monaloni Coffee Company on the nineteenth. That's a Friday. This is all in our newsletter that I just sent out before we got here. And it will be at the Waikolo Charity Walk, doing Kiki IDs. Showing presence down there. So I'll go over the traffic trends for April. Our self call officers were able to issue six hundred twelve citations. One hundred twenty seven speeding, seventy eight moving citations, thirty four seat belts, sixty nine unsafe citations, twenty eight electronic device citation cell phones and made nine DUIs. Also five child restraint citations went out. They also responded to thirty eight reckless driver calls within our district. And we did have eight major traffic collisions, when one of them was DUI related. Our officers also did twenty two grants, overtime, overtime grants and non overtime grants. Fifteen of those were for speeding, two seat belts, four distracted driving and one DUI saturation throughout our district. And the next report is a crime report. For April, again, for South Walla District, we had four reported assaults within our district. Four burglaries, seven criminal property damage investigations, eleven thefts, one unauthorized entry into a motor vehicle and three drug investigations. And we did have four major incidents in our district for the month of April. That's pretty much it. I don't want to take up too much time. Thank you again for having us.
What is it grant?
Oh, your world. Sorry. I don't know.
So the department receives money from the federal government to conduct traffic enforcement on an overtime basis. So they pay officers overtime to look for these specific violations of speeding, the use of a mobile electronic device while you're driving, seatbelt and child restraint violations and hovering out of the water.
Did you say saturation though?
Yeah, so we do our grant DUI enforcement two ways. One would be the traditional roadblock that you can envision, a static roadblock where we stand there, cars come through us and we screen everybody. We also do what's called a saturation patrol where we don't stand in one place, we actually patrol around and try to saturate high high areas that we would expect DUIs to occur. And high accident areas. Okay, so what we'll close up with is we have a couple of things coming up. So Police Week. Police Week is the week that May fifteen falls in. So May fifteen is Police Officers Memorial Day, Police Officers Memorial Day. The week that it falls in is designated as Police Week. So to commemorate that, we have a ceremony in Hilo on May fifteen at the Hilo Station, and then we'll have a ceremony Tuesday, May sixteen, at the Kona Station. And everyone is welcome to join us while we honor those who have fallen in the fire. And then, oh, sign waving?
Yes, sign waving, church roll that Police Week on Thursday, if you guys wanna, you guys can get in touch with me. I'll put you into person who's spearheading that. It's my Sandalwood community, able to watch person. I'll get your contact information. I've just come up, I'm gonna have, I'm having like fifth graders at Kono make support science, so that might be their classic on them. Yeah, but yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Captain. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, everybody.
Wonderful. Thanks for all that you do for our community. Next up, I'd like to spend some time with our two council members representing the Wyoming area here and learn about some of their ongoing work at the council. So I'd like to start with Chair Kimball, if that's okay.
Sure, yeah, thanks, James, and good evening, everybody. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight. It's been a very busy week already. We are continuing to work on the budget. We should be receiving draft two from the administration, I believe tomorrow. And we continue to deliberate those series of ag-related taxation bills that I mentioned to you last time. I won't go into detail again about that tonight, but that continues to be a subject of discussion for the council. Also continuing to work on our short-term vacation rental bill and hope to have that latest draft out by the end of the month. I think we've come up with some good solutions for some of the challenges. Poles for the dogs. We hear it from folks. But what I wanted to actually spend most of my time tonight about is Bill forty-eight, which is a bill that I introduced last week with Councilmember Vegas. Bill forty-eight proposes the creation of an Office of Sustainability, Climate Equity and Resilience in the County, otherwise named Oscar. The timing of the introduction of this bill and the creation of the office is was intended to coincide with the release of the draft Climate Action Plan. The Climate Action Plan was released on May first, and I'll share a link with James that he can share with all of you to give your feedback and input on the draft action plan. The planning department is accepting feedback on the Climate Action Plan through this month, so make sure you take a moment to review it and provide your feedback. It's really valuable. But the intention of Oscar has really, there's really two purposes for it. The first is that we kind of know what we need to do to promote sustainability, address climate change and build resilience in the county. But we just don't always quite do it. We're struggling with taking ideas and getting it into action. And so having spoken with the Planning Department, Research and Development, Finance, our Corporation Council, we worked together to create this office that will actually function like a tasking agency within the county, making sure all of our departments are considering climate, environmental and equity impacts in their decision-making and also serve as a coordinating body with all of our partners that are working in the nonprofit space or the public space. Because we have a lot of people doing a lot of great work on this island and we just need to work a little bit better to coordinate. So the whole office is designed around something called the Collective Impact Model. It's the same kind of model that was used to form Vibrant Hawaii, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with. But the idea is that we develop a common agenda, we use shared metrics, we do mutually reinforcing activities. There's constant communication and at the center of it all, there's a coordinating agency that makes sure that everybody is communicating and working together and staying on task. And that coordinating agency will be this Office of Sustainability, Climate Equity and Resilience. The Office will be positioned under the mayor and it will be headed by an administrator. And we really wanted to elevate the efforts around climate change, sustainability and resilience to that level to ensure that implementation happened, both internally and externally. The other main reason for introducing this office and this bill now is just the incredible amount of money that's available through the various Biden packages from the federal government. There's money coming from EPA, FEMA, Economic Development Agency, as well as the DoD in all of these areas. And one of the things that I'm fortunate enough to have been selected to serve on the EPA's Local Government Advisory Committee. And one of the things that this allows me to do is the advisory committee actually sees all of the EPA's grants before they put them out to the public to for application. And so I'm actually seeing all the grant language kind of one step ahead. And we've used that to formulate the language of the bill so that when those applications come out, we'll be able to align ourselves. There's a lot of money particularly around environmental justice and what's something called the Justice Forty Initiative, and that's why we really focused on including equity and traditional knowledge, place-based decision-making in the draft of our bill. So I encourage you all to look at Bill forty-eight. I'm super excited about it. It's what I came to the council to do. And really hope to see a lot of positive impacts, both internally and externally. I just wanted to sum up today by saying we are just about to head into hurricane season. It is forecast to be potentially an El Nino year, which could mean heightened incidences of hurricanes coming through the islands. So everybody start to work on getting your emergency kit together, be prepared, build that resilience in your household. And then the other final announcement I wanted to make is that Western Week is gonna be in Honakaal later this week, so the parade will start on May twentieth, and then the rodeo will be of course on Memorial Day, as it always is, on the twenty-seventh with all sorts of activities during the week in between. So hope to see you guys there. I will be there enjoying some of the festivities as well. Thank you, as always, to the Community Association for the invitation tonight. And appreciate the chance to speak with everybody. Look forward to some questions later. Mahalo.
Hello Chair, thank you so much. And then next, I'd like to welcome in Councilmember Cindy Evans.
Well, thank you so much. Aloha, everyone. Great to see you. You know, I love this idea of celebrations and celebrate. And I noticed this last week, the other members of the county council were giving money through their contingency relief funds to a lot of community events and community, just wonderful events. Actually, Chair Kimball has some coming out in her district and, you know, all over the island, people are coming out of COVID and they want to get out and play and be with each other and community. And really, it's just exciting to see us coming out and enjoying each other's company. So I think as the council member for District Nine, you know, I want to see and support these celebrations and festivals and community gatherings. And please come to me. Tell me when you're organizing them and I might be able to have a little money there if we have some discretionary. I don't know how many discretionary funds we're gonna have in this next fiscal year, but I'm hopeful that I will have some to be able to support the nonprofits and the stuff that we do for the community. So having said that, I thought I would share a couple of things. You know, again, being the new person on the council and understanding that it's about relationships, I am just so pleased you have Steve tonight. Steve and his crew work so hard. It's a heavy lift, given the amount of roads we have and just the numerous amount of building permits. I hear there's just so many people doing remodels and upgrades, electrical and air can whatever. And so his team is really swamped and my hat's off to them, but you know, I think that having Steve out in the community, meeting face to face with you is really critical to how he learns about our day-to-day life and what we experience through our stories about what is going on. And I think that's really good to help him in his administration, you know, kind of get that job done for us at our local level. So hats off to inviting him out and, you know, let's, you know, keep inviting Steve out. Sorry, Steve. But keep inviting him out so he knows what we're experiencing and what's happening to us. And I think the other thing is someday it would be wonderful to have Zendo Kern, the Planning Director, and Steve, the road person talking with us about this idea of concurrency, which is a really tough subject to talk about. You know, do you, when do you build the roads? You know, the roads first. If you build the roads, they come. If you don't build the roads, we get into these horrible traffic jams in our lifestyle and our quality of life goes downhill. So the question is, you know, when, what's that sweet spot? Because if you're not planning, which we all know planning takes a long time. If you're not planning for it, if you're not getting in the queue and you're not getting on that list so that you get the funding that you need to get those roads or there's intersections or roundabouts or whatever in, then by the time you get around to doing it, it's just a painful exercise as we get that, get them. So what's the timing of this? So I do think concurrency and the discussion of concurrency is gonna come back around to the at least I want to bring it up to my members in the next six months. I see concurrency coming back again. Does, what does that really mean for us? And I think Zendo and the Planning Director know that there's people in South Kohala that are planning. They're talking about more housing. That housing means a percentage of the housing is affordable housing. But what that also means is a lot of cars. What that means is hopefully they're working families with children. What does that mean? That means more students into our classrooms and there's that ripple effect. So I'll stop there. With little time I have, only five minutes. So I'm gonna switch over. I have been involved. I'm gonna try to organize. I talked to the principal of Parker School today. I'm gonna try to organize all four principals to talk about the use of our mass transit system and our buses that North Kohala, there is these communities out in North Kohala along the coast. The kids come up to Wyoming to go to school. How is that mass transit being used? They've been changing the bus and the timing of the bus and picking up the kids and it's really not it's really impacting our children and we're gonna have to revisit it and come up with a better solution. So I wanted to tell you that. This is for Nancy. Talked with the Parks Director. There's money now, a big huge lump sum of money. Everybody recognized all across the whole island, roofs are leaking and they've been leaking and they finally put aside a lump sum money and they're gonna go out, they're gonna try to go all across the parks and rec facilities and try to get these roofs fixed. This problem exists everywhere. And it's, we just have to step up and he said, you know, he's getting the lump sum and he's gonna work through it. And I said, well, I want to make sure that I'm not real far down on the list. You know, we gotta get this done. And, you know, he heard me. The other third thing I want to tell you is I've had several groups come to me and there's a lot of people that are just wanting more and more recreational opportunities. There's a group who wants a pump track. If you don't know what a pump track is, you know, it's it's bicycles that go over little humps and they kind of fly in the air and it can be for little kids, it can be for adults, you know, so. And then there's people who want dog parks. There's more people who want expand skateboard parks. There's people who want more softball fields, soccer fields. This is all across the district. And so, you know, I really believe recreation, health and wellness, getting back to that is really gonna help us because I'm disturbed, if you're not, that I'm seeing too much violence in the front page of the West Y today and the Hilo Tribune Herald. I have a feeling that we might be having a real drug addiction epidemic going on and it may be growing and it probably is growing in our community. And I think people were isolated, they got in these neighborhoods, got isolated, maybe got into their drugs and we need to get people out. We need people to know that there's these health centers available. We need people to realize there is access out there and you know, I'm concerned about it. I'm starting to pay more attention to this issue because I just believe there's way too much going on. I've noticed in Wyoming today. I walked over to Parker School, I saw a couple homeless people in the park and I'm just realizing that, you know, there's some struggle, people, some people out there are really struggling. Don't know, don't have the, if we all had the answer, it would be taken care of, don't. So I want you to know there's a bunch of people now coming, I've met with a few of them, they want to build affordable housing. And they want to build it in our district. And so there's a lot of conversations going on. So with that, my five minutes are up.
Thanks, Councilmember. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
We're gonna move here along and we have a couple of, thank you, councilmembers, appreciate your time and you're welcome to stay on. So we get to some Q and A later on when we talk more about infrastructure. So appreciate your time if you're able to hang in there a little bit. I'm just gonna go through a couple of announced, community announcements. And Mary Beth and I will try and sync up as best as possible on some of these here, see if we can get these together.
I put them in the order you gave them.
Awesome. All right, so this one is an ongoing event in our community. This is the Wyoming All Schools Art Exhibits. So we have a lot of different schools in our community. They've all kind of come together and this is being displayed and exhibited at Kahuna Theater. A lot of different partners have done, have come together, put this on from Kahuna Theater, while Order of Kamehameha, Hawaiian Civic Club, Nakalai Baha. And then, of course, our Wyoming schools. And this is up through May twenty-eighth, so if you've given it a chance, please go enjoy this. It's really about our Bahipana and what are sacred places in our communities and what it means and seeing our, through our kids' eyes and our Kiki's eyes. So this is an enjoyable show to go and see there. Thank you, Mary Beth. This next one here is, we announced it kind of last time around, but it's actually next week, Tuesday. This is our Second Annual Hawaii Fentanyl Addiction Summit, Addiction Summit. It's being held here at Monocristian Ohana, Kahuna Town Hall. There is a cost and a fee associated with this, but we have some big speakers and really talking about this addiction and this issue in our communities.
There's scholarships.
And there are scholarships involved for attending this as well. So there's a registration link. Communityfirsty.org/hi-dash-fentanyl-dash-summit there. Yeah. Or there's a number that you can call. So this is also up on our Facebook page here. And the next one we have here is really talking about wildfire preparedness. There's a webinar coming up on on May sixteenth. You can scan that QR code there, or you can visit the Hawaii Wildfire Management Organization website to join and sign up for this webinar. And we're more about this and being prepared for for the fire season that we're approaching here. We just had a little bit of a experience with that on our coastal area of Honolulu and Howilo area, so kind of prepare our communities for reports to come here. Thank you. And then also a little bit later this month, Friday, May nineteenth, we have our Wyoming Family Food Truck Friday at Tech Observatory Headquarters. A lot of different businesses and food trucks there and activities for the kids and Kiki and live music as always. So something to look forward to with your family. Then also coming up, this is, registration is open already for this, but this is for upcoming community arts classes hosted by Thelma Parker Memorial Library. The next upcoming one is Saturday, June third. There's limited space, so it's encouraged that you do register for this event. And so you can connect with the park, the Thelma Parker Library. The reserve is up a spot. And I think these are ongoing. This is just the first of a number of series that they're putting on. This is kind of a last minute one, but tomorrow, if any of you are interested or have time, and if our viewers online as well, if you're interested in helping out at our Restore with Habitat for Humanity here in Wyoming, they're looking for volunteers to help unload and move furniture at their site. And they're also offering a special discount for those of you that we can enlist and show up there to help out tomorrow. But there's a contact info for Margaret Tercata, so please reach out to her if you're interested in lending a hand tomorrow morning. And then we'll kind of leave this one here for our next guests coming up here in a moment, but something to look forward to is our twenty twenty-three Charity Walk. And I will kind of leave it there for a little surprise and more commission about that. I think that's all I really have. There are a couple of things that I wanted, actually Patty wanted to share, if that's all right.
Wow, three weeks. Two things, real quick. The library, Hawaii, excuse me, Thelma Parker Library has a new offering for those of you besides books, you can get seeds. They have little packets of seeds. They park it up across the state, the Master Gardener Group. And so there's all kinds of different seeds. And I'm gonna pass this bag around and you can take one. And there's instructions on what to do if you're in our belly, breathing thumb. But it's actually kind of a very cool new addition to the library. And then the Wyoming Resilience Hub is passing out, maybe some of you have already done the survey. If you have, it's a survey really trying to look at what are top applying issues for our community around resilience and sustainability and emergency preparedness. So if we take a few minutes to fill this out and leave it at the front desk tonight, I'll do a makeup. Can I pass that to you? Names and you pass on?
Thank you, Patty.
Thank you. That's it.
So we do try and keep a lot of these things up on our Facebook page and social media account. That's our Facebook page, but just wanted to highlight a couple of these that are coming up for this month. And as always, if you or an organization you're building with have an event or need some help broadcasting in the community, we're more than happy to do that with you. And as always, if you or an organization you're building with have an event or need some help uh broadcasting in the community, we're more than happy to do that with you and support you in that outreach. Um, and so as we left off here with this, with our community, our charity walk. Um, for our monthly meetings, we also strive to recognize the work our fellow nonprofits do in our community. And for the month of May, we'll be spotlighting uh Visitor Aloha Society of Hawaii Island. And then providing a safety net for our, our visitors, our Malahini. Uh, Bash provides necessary resources and support to overcome unfortunate events for those visiting our island home. And so to extend this gift of aloha and help us learn more, this evening we're joined, I'm grateful we're joined by the executive director for Bash, Rochelle Hennings. Thank you, Rochelle.
You pretty much did the first paragraph.
Okay.
Hi, everybody. Uh, Rochelle Hennings. I'm the executive director for Bash Hawaii Island. I've been with Bash for. Oh my goodness, I think 11 or 12 years. Um, executive director for about three or four years. Um, who is here? Can you raise your hand and let me know if you're familiar with Bash? Okay, Patty. Okay, this is kind of what I expected. What we do is we export aloha. And the way we do that is, so we are the visitor Aloha Society of Hawaii Island. When a visitor comes over here and has some type of adversity, we step in and help. Our mission is to care for every single visitor who has experienced adversity. We try to help them however we can. Um, so that's why a lot of people don't know us, but everybody in the main, people in mainland know us, but over here they don't. Um. What am I saying here? Sorry. What kinds of things have you done? Um. I have, we have some cases, cases we're going to come up. Okay, I'm going to say, thank you so much. Um. So um Bash has three, we have three objectives. So the very first objective, our mission is to assist uh travelers driven by adversity. And those adversities we'll get to um in a little bit. Number two, we uh help, we relieve our already burdened police force and health workers by reducing their workload. So when a visitor needs something. If, if the policeman, the policeman have to do it or our hospitals have to do it. So we step in and, and that relieves them and they can go on to do the next crime or the next. Health thing. And number three, we support the tourism industry by educating travelers on physical and health safety for their wellbeing and to lessen the tourism related strains on our EMS system. Since 2003, Bash and our volunteers, we've helped over 20,000 people. Some of the adversities uh visitors face, I'm going to warn you, these are, some of these are shocking. Right? Kidnapping, physical assault. This is why they're on vacation. Locking scans, unoperas entrant motor vehicles, vehicle thefts, lost and stolen items, being stranded. And a multitude, multitude of medical emergency injuries and illnesses. Just this past year, we helped 21 families who had to deal with the death of one loved one. They came over here into paradise. And they had to fly home with an empty seat. These, um, most of deaths are, um, 50% of the, um, 50% of the deaths are either natural causes or drownings. The other ones can be auto accident related, um, murder, uh, attempted murder, suicide, attempted suicide. It ju, it just gives me goosebumps because this is not what vacation is supposed to be. I have written down a few, a few real case stories. These are real stories and we're going to have our audience help us out. The first one is a robbery from a woman. Uh, she was in Alaska. She's from Alaska and she's visiting us today. And she's going to tell us what happened to her. Hi.
My husband and I are from Canada. While on vacation here at a big island beach, we were befriended by a nice gentleman. After a long and pleasant conversation, he invited us to his house where he proceeded to rob us of $200, a camera and a cellphone. We couldn't believe this happened to us. We had not only been duped, but we were afraid for our lives. Bash reached out to us and provided us with information and outreach support, enabling us to change our reservation and move to the other side of the island. I'm happy to just say the defendant was arrested and the items were returned to us.
Nice. We had a, um, a near drowning case. Is, um, is she here tonight?
Yes.
Yeah. I'm so glad we survived.
I wanted to make sure you understand how great your people are. My son and I can never thank you enough. We were on vacation on the Big Island and while swimming, I swallowed some seawater. Became unresponsive and nearly drowned. Your state's emergency services did an excellent job. Helping me physically, but the most remarkable support came from Bash. Bash, a Bash employee was on the scene quickly and helped look after my son as I was in critical condition in a hospital in Y M A. My thoughts were only of my 11-year-old son. The thought was haunting me as to what was happening to him. I was in no shape to speak to him. And relieve any of his fear. Bash was there to take him to lunch, take his mind off of what had happened and reassure him everything would be okay. Bash then made all the arrangements for his return home and contacted our family. Bash drove him to the airport, accompanied him to the gate, got him safely onto his flight home. Bash worked 12 hours straight, helping us in every way possible. Most remarkable was the professionalism and the concern while helping us. It was genuine and heartfelt.
And we still get Christmas cards from you every year. I know we have a gentleman from Texas. His brother broke his leg.
My Texas brothers and I were enjoying a day at the beach on the Big Island. I decided to jump in the water from a small ledge that I obviously misjudged as safe. The next thing I knew, my brothers were carrying me out of the water. I couldn't walk and I ended up having surgery for the two broken legs I received from my miscalculation. Our plans for the remainder of the trip had to be canceled. Bash was awesome. They were able to change our flight home. They also worked with the hotel and rental car agency to shorten our reservations and get us a refund on the unused portions.
Are you alive still?
Yeah.
We have, um, Patty's a very sad. She was on the east side and something very traumatic happened to her as she, when she was visiting from Alaska.
You'll have to imagine that I'm a young woman visiting. While driving to a local beach, I noticed my luggage moving around in my rental car. I stopped to secure my bags and out of nowhere, two women pulled up next to me, jumped out of their vehicle, hit me in the head, forced me to lie face down on the ground. And then stole my rental car with all my belongings. Bash helped me with emotional support and worked with the host at from lodging where I was staying, who then offered some financial relief. I'm having trouble sleeping now because of this traumatic event. Bash suggested I see a psychologist once I get home so I can try to heal. He was ordeal. The prosecuting attorney's office has informed Bash the charges are being forced. I mean.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you. And an elderly gentleman, Mark was over here visiting his um grandbabies. And what happened to you?
I flew to Hawaii to visit with my daughter and grandchild. During my visit, I got into an argument with my son-in-law concerning the health and wellbeing of my grandchild. My comments angered him and he physically attacked me and broke my foot, the son of God. He then kicked me out of the house. I made a police request and requested child protective services get involved. In the meanwhile, I was homeless and needed surgery on my twelve. With assistance of the eight zero eight homeless task force and Bash, I was able to have my surgery, a place to stay and to get home.
I hope you're proud of yourself. And the last case, we have an elderly gentleman who is traveling with his wife from Asia. Something unexpected.
I'm an elderly man from Asia, man. While I was traveling with my wife, I was going to lose my fingertips. I rode the plane at the corner and the plane took off without me. On arrival, I had mostly made my last destination, but two or three forty seconds. I started working at the coatroom desk. He was not willing to let me. I didn't know what to do. I was confused. I didn't know where I was. I didn't know that one number was in the address. Police were called, but I hadn't broken any laws. And that's been solved to go back and ask the back of the day, like back to LAX. It was a serious situation and then Bash said yes, but only at the airline we lived in public. Bash didn't want to be stranded in LAX. I have its fame, the airline is a good fighter. She was still in LAX, thanks for worrying. Go back to Los Angeles that night and the next morning, why can't I go back to California? This is a good story. Bash and Delta Airlines.
So I was just told I have one minute left, so I'm going to kind of skip down here. Um, most of our, um, we're always looking for volunteers. Mark is one of our newest volunteers. And so yeah, any questions you can ask them or ask me. Um, most of our funding, 80 to 90% of our funding comes from the Hawaii Tourism Authority. And as a lot of you probably know, um, Hawaii Tourism Authority is not looking to, um, the, the. There's a bill, uh, bill 1375 um has been deferred. And they are not being, um, being, um, budget funded this next year. So. We're good with our fundings until the end of this year. I don't know what's going to happen. This is, like I said, within this is over 20 years. Um, I don't know what's going to happen to the visitors. I don't care about my job. I can find another job. It's those visitors. Uh, we're one of the few states that has an organization like this. And we are 24/7. I'm on call 24/7. Um, I also wanted to share with you the charity walk. Um, is, has anybody done charity walk before? Okay, super fun, super fun. If you, uh, I gave you all of our shore. If you're able to donate to Bash, use that QR code. For every dollar you donate using this QR code, they're going to double up. So my goal this year is 10,000. I'm up to 7,000, but if I could raise 10,000, we're going to receive $20,000. And that should help secure more funding for more people in need. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, Rochelle.
You're welcome.
I appreciate the work you do for our communities, yes, and our visitors. Thank you so much. We do also have a, a basket that Nancy will be passing around. So if you are so inclined to, to donate towards Bash. We can collect a little bit from you and, and give it, give our gift to Bash this evening. So thank you for generosity. Okay, um. You know, for our last couple of meetings, uh, a couple, a few back even. Uh, we've been joined by administrators to share information about our county planning efforts and our housing initiatives. And as part of this ongoing discussion, we felt important to connect with our county department, uh, Public Works. As we look at infrastructure and learn more about the permitting process and then a couple of things there. So our final portion of today's agenda will focus on the operations of this impactful agency. And we're grateful we're joined by uh Director of Public Works, Stephen Palcy. Welcome, Steve. Thank you for joining us here this evening.
Thank you. Um, aloha. Um, it's good to be here. Good thing. Um, somebody said I had a target. I'm not quite sure where it is. I actually have the funnest and easiest job in the entire county. I, uh.
Did you say fun and easy?
So I'm, I'm actually a member of the community. Um, my wife and I have been here for two and a half years. Um. Our whole story was I was going to come here and retire and drive a bus at the airport. And it didn't quite work out that way. Uh, my wife built me into, uh, my wife Kim built me into. Uh, working for the county. I actually started off with EDM and then. Ended up with E D W as the Deputy Director and I've been the Director here for, for a bit since, uh, I guess about a year, June, June of last year. Um, yeah, it's a, it's a fun job. It's a challenging job. Um. I, uh, I've explained to folks that I'm actually feeling like I'm in the fourth quarter of my career. I started off as an engineer. Working in a consulting field, working as a consulting engineer. I then went to work for a very large oil company doing environmental cleanup projects, hazardous waste site remediation, oil spill cleanup, those sorts of things. And then I ended up as a, uh, as a project director for a mining company, um, the largest steel and mining company in, in the mainland. Uh, and then I came here and lo and behold, I'm not driving a bus, but I, I am in the fourth quarter of my career. I still got a. Lot of, a lot of good year, uh, years left, I hope, as well as, um. An opportunity to really serve the public and do something. Uh, I've actually been on the other side, uh, being the guy that had to fill out the permit applications and, and do all that compliance and stuff. So. So the, the county's Department of Public Works is a very, very big organization. Um. I think the number of listed positions is 473. I think we presently have a vacancy of 72 positions. So we're doing actually pretty well. We're, we're about 25% empty there for a while during, during all the COVID. Um, our budget, if you combine the, um, the general fund, the highway fund and the beautification fund, our department spends about $64 million a year. And that doesn't include the capital investments that we get funding sources from the state and from the, the feds and somebody mentioned earlier, a lot of grants. Um, there's six divisions. There's, um, automotive. There's the administrative division. There's the building division, which is the most famous of all our divisions. Um, and then, well, I'd say infamous, I think, then highways, that's most famous. Everybody, you know, highway. The engineering division. And then lastly, there's the traffic division. We, uh, we have a lot of work going on and when I came into the position, I basically was asked, what are your goals? And it was pretty simple. At, you know, a year ago, it was make epic work, fix the building permitting system, make it better. Um, help us, help us improve, you know, our output of permits. Uh, another one was, you know, we were 25% down, so attract some, uh, people, get, fill, fill the seats, if you will. Um. Retain people, train them, encourage them to want to come work for the county. And, you know, at, at the very bottom with our building, and we're going to talk a lot about a building tonight, but we were like almost 40%. Uh, vacancy in our building department and that would be inspectors, plans examiners, and then the clerks, um, up front. So. That's gotten a whole lot better and I'll talk a little bit more about that. And then the third thing I set as a goal or an objective was, uh, communication. I think transparency, people talk about it. I don't know that they necessarily know what that means. Um, from my background, I had a, a ma, a really good manager once in a previous life. Say what you do, do what you say. And that can't be done in a vacuum. You have to engage with community, you have to listen to the community, you have to talk to folks. You can't just go out and do a road construction project anymore because you're impacting so many people's lives and. There's all these other things that kind of come into play now with, you know, uh, complete streets and pedestrian friendly and sidewalks and all sorts of things. So. So we have to listen to the community. I have to get better at them. Those are my three goals. And then once I got into the job, it was like, wait a minute, there's two other things that we need to get better at. I always talk about being proactive versus reactive. Um, our department does react it really well. Okay. You, you've seen our work during, um, tsunamis, hurricanes, tropical storms, Kona lows, earthquakes. Uh, the lava flow, um, from Mauna Loa this past November, December. We were really good at being reactive. But we kind of fall down at being proactive. What does that mean? Well, do you have a, do you have a maintenance, a work management process for doing maintenance, whether it's roads, whether it's streetlights, whether it's traffic signals? Um, I think we have somewhere like around 90 assets, county buildings that, that our department is in charge of maintaining. And, uh, doing general repairs and stuff. But from a, from a in, industry background that I have, it's like you have scheduled planners, you have maintenance records, you have work orders for. Um, you know, doing preventive maintenance that the computer spits out and says, hey, it's time to go check this drywall and, uh, pump it out. We, we don't have that. We're paper-based. It all feeds into that kind of, you know, reactive, proactive. So. That was another goal I set and, and I'll tell you a little bit about what we're doing there. Um, and then the last thing, of course, is, and, and several people brought this up, there are lots of funding opportunities out there. There's grants, there's, there, there's, uh. The Biden, uh, infrastructure, uh. Uh, grants, there's, um, for trails, there's all sorts of things. So it, it's really like, let's capitalize, let's take advantage of that. So let me talk a little bit about the divisions. The easiest one to talk about is, is the automotive, right? Um, Randy Riley runs the automotive division and Randy, what's your job? He goes, keep the county moving, right? It's as simple as that. I think the county has 1,100 vehicles. Automotive takes care of all the fuel. Automotive takes care of all the fuel, um, to make sure that there's fuel for, available for everyone. Somebody mentioned hurricane season, I was just today, today and tomorrow, we're doing training with civil defense. And we're, uh, simulating a hurricane coming this way. And what's one of the most critical things? Make sure all the county's fuel tanks are full before we have to start getting into, um, uh, recovery and, um, all sorts of, you know, uh, actions to, to, uh, take after, after the disaster. So automotive, like I said, keep the county moving. The administrative group division, that's the second division, is really, uh, plays a critical role in county as well. I mean, yeah, they do our payroll and they, they, um, they manage our budget, which, you know, we're in the middle of the budget cycle. It seems like the budget cycle starts the day, like, the fiscal year starts in July first. So July second starts the, the budget cycle for next year. It seems like it's just never ending, um, but they do a great job of tracking that, working with our finance folks. We also are the procurement people for the county. So we do, um, public bids for county work, road work, county building project, but we also work with Parks and Rec. We do theirs, we, we do, um, DMs, whether it's our solid waste facilities, they've got a, a massive amount of work to do with the, the Gila wastewater treatment, uh, plant. So we are the folks that like write the contracts and we assist those, uh, departments with, um, we're getting their bids out, getting contractors, reviewing the contractors, all those sorts of things. Our administrative department, uh, our division, uh, takes care of all the county water spigots. Now, there aren't many spigots on this side of the island, but when you go to the other side of the island and where you get into places where people are living on catchments, um, the waters department supplies the water, but the, uh, Department of Public Works manages those facilities and actually pays the water bill, which I'm still chafed about. I, I don't know why we have to give money to heat the locomotive at the water. We're, they're also the interface with FEMA and FHWA. And we can talk about FEMA a little bit when we talk about some of the projects that we have going on. The building department, like I said, it's, uh, it's the one that people hear most about. I'll get to permitting, I'll save the best for last, but the building department is a division, I'm sorry, the building division is, is comprised of the folks that do all the building permits. Um, they're comprised of the folks that, uh, do repairs and maintenance on all county, uh, buildings. And then they're also comprised of the folks that do all the general services, all the, the janitorial work, the, the mowing, the landscaping and that sort of thing. So, and then they also have a group called Design and Engineering and they project management, project managed construction of new facilities. Um, the biggest one we've got going on right now is the, um, the emergency call center, um, which is a project over on Gilloside. It's about a thirty-one million dollar project and we have, uh, architects, uh, as well as, uh, engineers that, that project manage those sorts of things. Biggest challenge, um, from that standpoint is just, you know, having la- lack of staff. You, you heard me talk about reactive versus proactive. Um, a lot of our facilities just haven't been given the TLC that they should have been given for years and years and years. So we're trying to catch up on that. Um, there was just a, a not very nice article recently about the fire department, uh, buildings and some of their conditions that all falls into our maintenance cycle. They've been ignored or maybe not given enough love. You know, you have roof problems, you have painting problems, you have all sorts of things. The Pahoa, uh, facility that houses the police and the fire, um, has termite infestation. So we have to work with them to tent it and come up with ways to do, um, temporary, uh, assignment of their work in other locations, but that all falls within, you know, building. It's not just, it's not just, uh, being slow at giving people's permits. We, uh, we, we do lots of other things too. So, um, what, we have roof and then the other one is AC, a lot, we have a lot of old air conditioning systems, children's that are in disrepair, the, the one down in Calikate for the police. We actually have a rental, we're in the process of, uh, of, uh, purchasing the equipment to, to install that. One of the great things I've learned about living here is it takes forever to get stuff. I mean, literally, we ordered air conditioning units and I think that the delivery time from train was fifty-two weeks, which is just, yeah. We live in the middle of the, of the Pacific Ocean here. Okay, so I covered three, let's talk about engineering. So there is actually two sets of tasks that they have. They're actually a permitting authority, so they permit grading permits, scrubbing permits, soil stack pile permits. They also do subdivision plan review after it's gone through planning to make sure that the roads meet, uh, all of our standards. The engineering group also does, uh, we have a full-time structural engineer that's in charge of bridges. We have countless, at least, I think a hundred and twenty national bridge inventory and then a whole bunch other. Um, before I came here today, we had a bridge that got inspected. It was an old timber bridge and we had to close it and pending being able to do some support stuff. So bridges are, you know, a really, really important thing. And, um, you've heard me talk about, you know, getting on a good maintenance schedule and getting those things inspected on a regular basis is, is critical. Then we do projects, right? So, um, what, what are we, what have we done here lately? Well, we're, everybody's familiar with Waikoloa Village. We're working on the design of a new roundabout there, that interception. We, uh, just let a contract and they start today to repay from the, uh, Mauna to Makai, um, about twelve miles of paving, eleven miles of paving. Um, on the other side, we've got Killaway Cave, which is the most expensive, one-third of a mile of, uh, new pavement, sidewalks and, and some other infrastructure. It's about a fifteen million dollar project. A number of those projects we get reimbursed by, uh, federal government, that one in particular, as well as the Waikoloa paving are like an eighty-twenty split. We, we've done work on Alii Drive, we fixed the road that was washing out underneath, uh, not far from King Kam. We've done work on the rough on the, uh, we had to do engineering work on some of the roads and seawalls and things like that. So again, lots of engineering projects, uh, going on at all times. We have to follow the county design standards for roads and streets. We're incorporating something called complete streets, which if you haven't heard about yet, um, very, very active, um, over city and county. I've been on a couple of, uh, recent Zoom calls, but, um, it's just making the streets, uh, so that as we go out and we do, redo projects, uh, on roadways that we're making them more friendly for pedestrians, for bicycles, for, for vehicles, kind of, you know, the complete street concept is, is multi, multi-use of the, of that roadway. Uh, and then of course, um, we're also engaged, especially on the engineering side, with a couple of things that are going on around here. Everybody's heard about YPO. We just had a public meeting there on Monday. We're starting with the first phase of work to start, uh, mitigating the, uh, rockfall potential on the upper, upper reach of that. And that's going to go on for a couple of years, but, um, part of what we do is, you know, we go out, we hire engineers, we work together, we go out to bid. We, we are attempting better to, uh, to engage the community and talk to them about road closures and and lay down areas and things that, uh, will affect them, um, on a regular basis. And then recently I went to one in Polo Valley, um, same thing, it was a public meeting. Uh, the county recently took over the, the road that goes all the way out there. And, um, so we're engaged in working with, uh, our partners from BLNR and, and the, the community out there as well. And then of course FEMA projects, um, you know, bridge projects, we're still doing bridge repairs, uh, with government, uh, seventy-five percent share from FEMA from Hurricane Lane. Um, the largest one, it's timely, right? We're five years in on Killaway eruption from twenty eighteen. We are in the process of working with FEMA to complete the environmental assessment. And if all goes well, we'll, um, we'll be done with that, um, sometime in July and we'll actually be able to go out to bid and finish the engineering, go out to bid and start that work. It's about fourteen miles of roadway. We're also working with the Department of Water Supply, they're putting in, uh, new water lines as well. So that's an eighty million dollar project that's funded, um, seventy-five percent by, uh, FEMA and twenty-five percent by the county. But it's going to be a, you know, a good solid two years of work. And, uh, I'm sure the folks, uh, who live there are going to be relieved, ecstatic, just very happy to finally be able to get back there and fix that infrastructure. So that's engineering, um, I mentioned highways, I think everybody knows highways, they see, everybody knows Neil Azvedo, uh, but they see, you know, his guys, um, Fych is up here on the Way Maya, but, working along the side of the road, tree trimming, grass cutting, fixing roads. We have the ability to be paving ourselves. So some of our paving work on these bigger jobs that are funded by the feds, we, we, we contract that out and we'll work with Grace or Blower or some of the guys that pave on, on island, Yamada is another one. But, um, highways have the equipment, they've got three pavers and they have the equipment. And we put together a list every year and we actually have a, a system, it's called Manly, where we, we, where we measure the quality of the road. And based on that, we get together to begin a year fiscal year and we, we lay everything out and we go, okay, these are the number of miles that we want to pay. You know, fast forward or go backwards to automotive, hey Randy, you got to keep Neil's pavers from breaking down and, you know, so it's kind of a team effort. But, um, when I got here, last year, we paved sixteen miles. All right, we have over a thousand miles of road on, on the island, county roads and, and we paved sixteen miles. So I got together with the highways guys and I said, we got to do better, I want to see three miles a month. So I challenged him to get to thirty-six miles this year. Um, right now, I think we're tracking around twenty-five or twenty-six. We set up a website so that the public, if you just go to the DPW website, you can hit a button and it'll show you what we're, what we paved, where we're going to pave. It's actually pretty good, but again, transparency, communication. So I don't know that we'll hit thirty-six this year, but we're going to come down close and, you know, it sets, and it was great because I really, you know, engaged, uh, the, the district overseers as well as Neil and the staff and said, come on, we can do this. So we're ma- we're making progress there. We have seven base yards, I think everybody's familiar with that. And again, culverts, potholes, um, we have, um, probably the most valuable resources on the island is, is highways, as I mentioned earlier, when we, when we get into emergencies, when we get into responses. Just really great people flooding. Unfortunately, they've been down to Puakoa way too many times this year with flooding, but, um, that's, that's another one of my goals is, is not just Puakoa, but on, uh, just in general on drainage, um, is to really improve and take a look at county drainage, uh, projects. Uh, uh, in general, just get better at managing stormwater. Waikoloa Village, um, is, you know, continues to grow, making a lot more impervious surface area up there, you know, we, we have to collectively work together to manage that stormwater. I, uh, I laughed one day, I, uh, I asked somebody early on, like, why is there no drywells? Why is there no drainage structures? You know, I'm walking around in Kona side and they go, it doesn't rain in Kona. And, um, it's either climate change or somebody was, uh, was not being truthful, but, um, it rains plenty. And, um, we, I think as time goes by with, with global, global climate change, it's going to rain more. So we, uh, we definitely need to, as a county, take a better look at that. The last division is traffic. And, um, all of the traffic lights, all the street lights, um, signals, all the striping, all the signs. Um, they run a really, really good operation, um, they're, they're, they replace all the signs every seven years. There's a program going around to, uh, replace streetlights with LED lights. Mary Beth and I have. Yes, we have, a lot of lies, what is it, lies?
Yes, yes.
What does LED stand for?
Yeah.
Um, but it's, it's a, we're, we're joking because we've had a conversation about the light ordinance and, and dark skies and things. And it's something else that falls within DPW's purview under chapter fourteen to, uh, enforce the lighting code. Um, just, just one more thing for us to do, but, um, the traffic guys do a really good job. They're the, um, they're also the ones, um, that, you know, we send them to go out and look at, um, ways to solve, you know, issues like, um, it's going to be a, a few years before we finally finish the design and the construction on the new roundabout at Waikoloa. But we were tasked by the community, hey, what can you do now? And, um, traffic guys went out and said, put in these, uh, speed humps, put in some signage, um, do a few things and, um, change, change the configuration of the, of the main crosswalk up there. So, so they have a lot of ability to do that, um, under a, a big, uh, broad, uh, box of tools, it, it's called traffic calming, right? There, there's a lot of ways. Inevitably, we pave roads and first complaint we get is we want speed humps because everybody's going too fast. I did that with Ponyola, I, I, people complained of the, the road had never been paved in forty years. And then we paved it and they're like, this is great. And a week later, I'm getting, you know, two emails a day because of speeding and you need to do something to slow the traffic down. And so, but anyway, there's a formal process, um, for communities or neighborhoods requesting speed humps or tra- other traffic calming, uh, measures. And that's all, you know, available on the website, just like with highways. If you find a, a cloud, a culvert or a pothole or something, same thing, there's a complaint process, you can go to the high, uh, DPW website, find highways and then submit them. The other thing, and, and we talked to the Captain Vanja Lisa and, um, Officer talked earlier about traffic. Our traffic folks actually analyze traffic data, crash data, and it helps guide them towards looking at, um, solutions, coming up with, uh, design changes. It could be traffic calming, it could be, um, one of the things that we've been doing, we just did this on Waikenua Nui, is raised crosswalks. So you have kind of like a, a speed hump with a crosswalk on top with some flashing beacons and things. So traffic is, is very good at, um, just kind of keeping an eye on, uh, the way things are going on around here. Okay, so let's talk about building permits. So you're, you're mostly familiar that Epic that rolled out, it's an electronic permitting system that rolled out in July of twenty twenty-one. So at the time, I'd been the Deputy Director since May, so I was kind of fresh. And I, I didn't know a darn thing about it and I always said, ah, don't worry about that, you go, you go finish Kalanioli, which we did, that's a whole nother story. But, so it was rolled out at the same time that the new building code was rolled out, the twenty eighteen code. At the same time where we identified about forty thousand permits that were technically expired, but they weren't expired. Um, the code allows you to have X number of years to, um, three years if you're a, if you're a contractor, five years if you're an owner, build, build your house. And we had all these permits that went back to the seventies. So it was, um, at the time, I think it was called a Triple Crown. Uh, I, uh, used to play hockey, so I call it a hat trick, but the point is, like, a lot of stuff was going on at once and it, and it was being done in twenty-one, we were still in the height of COVID. We had massive, you know, um, shortages of staff. We didn't necessarily do the best job of communicating and training our people or the community. So it was, it was candid. Sorry, it was a mess, who said that? Yeah, it was, it was, it was a challenge. So, um, fundamentally, I mean, it comes down to people, process and technology, the technology was good, the concept of doing things electronically, getting rid of paper is a great idea. The, the people part of it, you know, we've got the people, we just didn't have enough. And in the process, we had some really, really old processes and I tried to tell somebody, imagine somebody selling you a bright brand shiny new software program. And rather than buying it, you go, well, I wanted to do it the way I've been doing it for the last fifty years and shove it into here. That's kind of what happened, kind of what happened. And as a result, we've been kind of backpedaling ever since. And the number one complaint I get is, you know, you guys take forever to do, do permits. So we took that seriously and certainly just in the last nine months, and we had some leadership changes within the building division as well, um, going back around July. So we've been at it maybe about nine months. We, we're doing things to make the process better. We're, first of all, we're trying to do a better job of training our people, we've been able to fill some seats. And we're trying to do a better job of communicating with the public, giving them checklists. We've identified a way to prioritize, um, applications when they come in. For instance, yeah, you put in your permit application, but somebody who's maybe working, wait, who maybe had it sent back and has a revision, we want to get that in here because it's typically going to be just a small little check on a revision so you can push the permit through. Um, we, we've done things like, uh, improve, we, we, we had so much work for the clerks, we tried to take the work out of their hands. We, we, we improved the ownership form when you submit a permit application. Now it's like you submit it, you certify that you're the owner and you have the right to apply for a permit and that's it. In the old days, it would go back and forth, like if you were a trust, you know, you have to send us a document that shows that you were legally allowed by the tr- I mean, there's just a lot of things that we've done. So the point I'm trying to make is, I think that we're working, we've listened to the community, we're working to streamline, improve our processes. We, um, we did some silly things. From an engineering standpoint, it's, um, I, I like this story, it's called Cloud in Delta. You have a set of plans to submit them. From an engineering standpoint, it's it's, um, I I like this story. It's called Cloud in Delta. You have a set of plans to submit them. Say your house plans have twenty pages. We send them back and we and we we write what what the issues are, what you need to correct. So then you send us back twenty pages with no markings to tell us what you fixed. That was the way it was done, always was was done that way. So he said, cloud in delta. What's a cloud? Well, I fixed this. Here's a cloud around it. And what's a delta? Right down in the bottom of the uh where your um block is, you write down change number one, I did this. Now it comes back into the plant examiner, he's not looking at twenty pages, he's looking at only the sheets that he had requested a change on. Simple stuff. I'm looking at Riley, you know what I mean? It's simple, right? But we weren't doing that. So it made the process a lot slower. So at the end of the day, um, I think it's getting better. Um, one of the things we've been tasked with is to develop good, meaningful metrics. What's a metric? Well, a metric measures your how how well you're doing, okay? I wasn't going to do a a quiz, but here's a quiz. How many permits do you think the building department gave out in twenty twenty-two total?
Five hundred. Ten thousand.
Fourteen thousand. Okay, fourteen thousand permits. Now, granted, you know, there was forty-six hundred of them were for residential PV, right? What have we done about that? Well, if you have applied for a residential uh uh photovoltaic solar system, if you apply for that today and it's ten kilowatts or less and it's roof mount, you don't need to get a building permit. All you need to do is get an electrical permit. We we we, another step of trying to make things stream streamlined. So take the work off of our reviewers and off of our clerks. But the bottom line is, we give out a lot of permits. The one, the one that we probably use to measure best is new residential construction. Now we do alteration, commercial and non-res and everything else. But um I I've said this before, that if you submit a permit application and it's right the first time, um, you should have a permit in less than ninety days. Okay, how did we do last year? New residential construction, hundred forty-five days. Now, somebody's gonna tell me it took me twelve months, but the clock has to stop, right? I review it, I give it back to you, the clock stops. Cause your architect might have it for three year, three months, four months, whatever. And then it comes back to us and then the clock starts again. The best thing you can do is get it right the first time. How do you get it right the first time? We do a better job of telling you and your architect and your licensed professional what what you need to do to get it through, whether calculations, whether, you know, specific items. And then you do a better job or your architect does a better job of bearing the documents. We work together and we can improve that. What? I thought they were gonna do away with that. So the reality, the reality of it is um that that hundred forty-five days, I just, I checked today for the month of March or through the month of March this year. Residential new construction permitting and and take it for what it's worth. Especially if it's done right the first time is ta- is taking less than sixty days. Okay, but again, you gotta filter out the fact that um, well, another simple thing, right? The owner wasn't on the application so that as a contact person. So, you know, you were relying on your licensed professional who would then tell you, you know, yeah, I'm waiting on the county. When in fact, it might have been sitting in his inbox waiting to work on it. So that's what I would call the good news on permitting. The last thing uh I I just wanted to touch on something specifically here is um, we did this road swap last year, right? So almost none of the roads that come through Waimea uh are county roads now, they're all state roads. I did talk to the state, they are planning to pave from Mud Lane into town and then from town out about a one point two miles towards Parker, and that is on their list of things to do this year. I talked to them today because I was with them at the emergency center. Um, and then the other one for us is uh White Road is brought up a little bit of um angst. And so um we are gonna repave that. We probably won't be doing that until at least July or August. I talked to Neil about that. We drew a line up the center for the right of way. Um, we will definitely work with the community. Um, we have to consider there's an old water line on one side and a new water line on on the other side. Um, but we, I've heard the concerns expressed and we'll work to uh make sure that however however we locate that pavement within it, I think it's a forty foot right of way that it'll it'll be made moved so that uh we we don't accidentally let anybody uh grind into an old leaky water line. Um, anyway, so a lot going on. I apologize. I used up my whole time. I was gonna give some time back to Councilmember Evans. But uh, you know, thank, thank you again.
Thanks, Director. Let's stay up here if if you mind, don't worry. I just wanna thank you for joining us in person and uh kind of talking about all these different things for the Public Works. And I know you mentioned White Road, but your website also shows like Poonani, I mean, we, I've never seen this thing before that the county's done. So I'm grateful for work that you're doing to really showcase and be transparent about what's happening. But between Poonani Drive and Lindsay Road as other projects and like what coming. So I'd love to dive into some questions here and I have some here that have come on the line earlier, but I'd like to have some later as well, so please, yes.
I'm wondering about uh Koli Koli Bridge. It's got all these big structures on top. Was that the fix?
That was the temporary fix, but that's a Hawaii, that's a DOT road, it's not a county road.
Okay.
And that was a temporary fix by uh the DOT. I think they ultimately have plans to um pretty do that.
To put it underneath or whatever.
I believe so, yeah. So there's a bridge down below that goes into the uh near the park.
Yeah.
That's a county bridge that was damaged by Hurricane Lane. And we just put a contract out on that, that that'll be fixed in about a year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Sewer systems. How many are on the island? What do they serve and why do we have more?
I'm sorry.
Sewer system, sewage treatment.
So once upon a time, they took um all the sewage and the wastewater out of the Public Works Department and and put it into the Department of the Environmental Management. Okay, um, I happened to work there for a few months and I still have a lot of contacts there. There's like eight plants on island. Biggest one is um Elo. They're spending a lot of money to fix it. And then the Kalakaike plant that has a lot of capacity. Um, but I.
Where do I go to find out like a map of where?
Oh, the DEM website. They actually have a very nice G I F system associated with it and it'll show you. Um, and I'll give you one of my cards. If you can't find it, I'll I'll be happy to send you the link.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
When did you say the Waikoloa Roundabout?
Um, we're doing the environmental assessment and um we're working on the design. So I'd say we're probably about another year plus from being ready to go out to bid. And I think when I looked at it, the construction timeframe was eighteen months.
Thank you. And I'm so sorry, people in Waikoloa are not easy to face.
I am, if you were at the last meeting, I I said I answered every single email that they sent me that said, you know, you've gotta change your mind and go back to a signalize. And I, I swear by the the roundabouts just from a safety standpoint. And I will be the first devil if, and everybody compares it to the one down in uh Pahoa and it's not gonna be anything like that. That'll be funny, but I promise.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I wanna say that Lake Chee Chong and his crew in Waimea used to do an extremely good job on what the state took over. They kept the place clean. They do a good job now, but they did a better job than the state is doing. Lani had her Christmas parade, the county used to clean in town on the curves. Clean the weeds, sweep the breeze and the leaves. This year it didn't get done. County's doing a good job.
Thank you.
I can't say the same for the state. It won't be along the road and there's branches that have been lying on the side of the road for six months.
Yeah, well, I had this conversation with somebody earlier. I'm I'm still waiting for them to finish, the state to finish paving Kaua and Mount Road. I don't know when that'll happen, but thank you.
I worked for the state. We've called them about branches that are in our easement. And they got every excuse in there.
Sorry to hear that.
I had several questions. Um. My question was about the column out there earlier. I noticed that when I was driving on the road, the section that they just repaved are falling apart already. Yeah, and this is like it's coming separating from the old pavement, so I.
Uh, I'm going to be with them again tomorrow at the E O C during the hurricane drill, so I will talk to Rob Lee directly.
And and there's another issue on the main highway here. Um, all the fire hydrants, the cutoff valves, when the county paved it over, they never removed the asphalt over the cutoff valves.
Okay.
So you don't know where to cut off now. If somebody runs into a fire hydrant on their highway, you're gonna have to shut it off at the main.
I wasn't aware of that. I'll 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 look into that.
Stay.
State now, yeah.
Yeah.
We, but we paved it the first time.
And it and it's in some of the subdivision too.
Okay.
There's like a any subdivision that the county had repaved, they don't go digging up the cutoff valve for the fire hydrants. So I mean, if you have a fire hydrant by your house, go look, look around, but there's supposed to be a cutoff valve somewhere.
I better make sure they have metal detectors on the trucks.
Have have the water supply, go out there and tone it and find out where to cover it. Just mark it with a big X and then the county can go.
Okay, well, good, thanks.
That sounds practical.
Uh, the State Department have any involvement with uh security with electrical grid case maybe of a hurricane and is maybe not half a transformer is or whatever.
No, that would be HEALCO. Um, our our involvement with them is typically when when there is a storm like the the Kona low back in December of Nahuonaka, our highways folks worked with HEALCO, clear trees, clear debris and everything else. To assist them at being able to get to their repairs faster, but but no, we don't, we don't do the electric. Now, the only electrical we do would be the boxes at the travel at the intersection with uh streetlight, uh traffic lights and things like that.
Yes, Riley.
Yeah, so you just wanted to thank you, even though the roads in Waimea are not county roads. Thanks, Chong, really helped out with your signboards to let everybody know about the traffic disruptions that were gonna occur with the parade. So even though you guys are responsible, you're still part of the community and really cool when you're able to.
Thank you.
Are you gonna get a deputy?
I have a deputy, Malia Kai, former, sorry, council, but yeah. I I wouldn't be here tonight if she wasn't. Yeah, thank you. But yeah, that that was really her book. And then just one, yeah, Tyche is awesome, you know. They also did the boards when um when the Ma'loa was going on as well, down by Savel, so yeah, thank you.
Yes, we'll write you a note, actually, Jake.
You say you're gonna be paving from town to Parker headquarters.
The state, the state DOT is going to pay, yeah, it it's, they said it was mile from town is zero. And going that way, it's mile marker one point two. So I don't know exactly where that, where that ends, but I thought it was.
Be widening the road and putting in a sidewalk.
Don't know.
That'd probably just be a
Don't know.
People are wrapping and doing sidewalks.
Well, one of the problems with sidewalks, because I get asked this all the time, is is we have to work within the right of way that we have. And if the right of way isn't big enough to put sidewalks in, you know, the best you can do is maybe make your shoulders as big as you can and put in, you know, shared use line.
Yes.
Is it possible to get tra- temporary traffic lights in the Waikoloa intersection, Ponyola and Waikoloa?
No, we look, we looked at that. Um, it's just too big of an intersection. And there's too much going on with all the uh, the uh, the length, the number of lanes coming in, the truck traffic coming down the hill. And then the length of the crosswalks and stuff, it was just, it was looked at, but we we ended up going down the route of trying to slow traffic down a little bit, especially the trucks coming down.
And what about old government road back here? Um, I noticed that some of the landowners have put gates and fences across the road.
I'm not sure that's a county road. I, it's come up before. I I have to look.
Well, yeah, it's like a road in Limbo.
It's a road in Limbo, yeah.
But I mean, is is it possible to cite the landowners?
I don't think you can put gates across roads in Limbo, but I'll have to check on that. We've run into that um somewhere else, but.
Yeah, I've I've gone up there and I've seen trailers parked in the middle of the old road. I mean, for an emergency road, you can, you could use it, right? But.
We've got that down south in a number of places where we have these old roads in Limbo. And I just, I made the decision to go out and fix them for emergency use. Um, there's one old cane hall road where Kawa flats floods all the time down in Pahala, I think it's in Pahala. And the state's constantly closing the road and averting them up onto our road and it's a road in Limbo. And I'm like, enough, we gotta fix it because you shouldn't have to have a pickup truck to drive across a a road, whether it's in Limbo or not, you know, you got like a little Toyota Corolla, you'll fall into a hole and never come out. So yeah, those are hard, hard decisions, but if it's access, especially in case of emergency, we have to do that.
Uh, the Waikoloa Emergency Evacuation Road is also in your jurisdiction too, then?
Um, yes, and that was one um that um is is clearly on uh Neil. I I think Tyche goes down there as well to um, to um keep a closer eye on that, especially as we're getting into the season we're getting in now. And and I know one of the things we were talking, Goodfellows, the uh folks that are doing the paving on Waikoloa Road. We talked about maybe taking some of their old coal plant material and and stocking it and storing it down along the emergency evacuation. Just so we have something for fixing the road.
So who owns the coal cleaning after the?
Depends on whether it's the state or whether it's the county, whoever whoever road it is that they they own it.
So is it like possible when they're planning it up to fill in the shoulder so it's nice and?
That's, that's the primary use that we we use it for, yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, it wouldn't be more efficient if you just did it at the same time that you repaved.
Yes, yes, and now you're dealing with rights away. And so I don't know what road you're talking about, but a lot of times we're just, we're just um planning, co-planning and paving. Putting back right within the the narrow right of way that we have and we we can't go, otherwise it would be trespassing.
So so.
It's a case by case.
Isn't the property line the easement from the property line to the road an easement?
It depends on what's on the map. You can go to real property tax and it'll show you what what the easements are for the county. But I I've got situations where I've got a a ten foot uh right of way. What what do you, what do you do with a ten foot right of way with it that's paved? What do you do with it? You know, you you have to legally let people, you have to let people trespass on other people's land just when two cars pass, right? So in cases like that, we're working to try to obtain more of the right of way so that we can actually have two vehicles down.
Well, a solution to that is when when the property is sold, you you claim eminent dom- domain for that that section of road.
You want to work for me? Are you good with abstracts and uh, you know, and right of way is a decent?
Well, I mean, it's not.
No, I I I agree with you. It's simple, but it's not simple, especially when you're dealing with people who maybe, you know, are a bit more recalcitrant. They don't wanna give up.
It's a new owner that's gonna lose the property and then, you know, they don't have the choice.
Right. I want this guy to work for me. He's the hammer.
Couple of questions here, Director, before we run out of time too far here. And uh some of our guests, I think, are in this field as well. Please jump in if you, if I, if you wanna say anything.
Please.
Um, one of the questions here is, what are the consequences of not getting a building permit?
So we get, we get lots and lots of complaints. Um, if if you have reason to believe that your neighbor has an unpermitted structure or um is doing work without a permit, um you have the ability to go in online through our website and file a complaint. And then we will investigate it.
Absolutely. What's the consequence to that, the individual that doesn't, has never filed it?
So if if they're found to be doing work that should have been permitted, they're issued a notice of violation and they're given forty-five days to correct it. And if they don't correct it, then they're issued an order and they're fined.
So so would a garage or a carport follow their permitting process?
You're asking the wrong person. I I don't know the details of the building code. I mean, i- if you're doing a uh, yeah. If it, if it requires an electric permit, the answer, or a plumbing permit, the answer would be yes.
So I mean, it's just such.
If you're building a new one or altering it?
This is a new one.
Okay, yeah, you need a permit for new garage.
Well, I mean, even if it's a detached stuff.
Yes, Cl.
And Steve, I'm I'm an architect here in town and I get a lot of people who come to me and they they say they wanna, I, they wanna remodel.
Come to me and they, they say they wanna, I, they wanna remodel their house. And they specifically say they do not want to get a building permit. So I'm out of a job because they don't want to get a building permit and they. There's no consequence, it seems like, to not getting a building permit and then they can do things. That a permit won't allow them. For example, um, it's common knowledge that people put in second kitchens after the fact. And um, I mean, I hear that term so many times, oh, we'll just do it after the building inspector. Uh, leaves, so it's something that is happening. Um, and I don't think the county can turn a blind eye to that. Um, and when, you know, I, I used to tell people. When it comes time to sell your house, it's gonna bite you in the behind because. Your, your addition or whatever is unpermitted. Somebody came to us and we bought this house specifically because it had a second kitchen in it. And we didn't mind that at all. So I think there's gonna be. A, a lot of unpermitted structures. I know there's a lot of unpermitted structures here in this county because of the environment that. Getting a building permit is so arduous. Uh, I had to put in a sink in my uh, additional uh, uh, in an office space that I rent. It took ten months to get that permit.
Right sink. And, and I said tonight, we're getting better.
And, and uh.
And you're the architect, so I can't even blame it on the fact that we sent it back.
You know, when we, when we get them back from the building apartment, we try to do it in a couple of days.
You'd be, you'd be surprised, a number of people that, that don't do it like that.
Yeah, I, that. I'm sure, I'm sure.
We're, we're getting better, you know, the, that, that's all I can say. You know, I, I apologize for the ten months, but. Um, we. We don't want it, we don't want to encourage people to not get permits because it's too hard, let's put it that way. I mean, the best thing you can do is, you know, as you said, if you go to sell your house, are you gonna disclose that I have an unpermitted? You know, plumbing in my garage or, you know. I don't know. It's hard, but, but again, we do have a process. Uh, you know, we're not trying to encourage people to rat their neighbors out, but if there's something going on. And um, you know, there's an opportunity to, to file a formal complaint and our inspectors will investigate.
Thank you Director, I think we're gonna leave it there, that's okay. But I just want to say that um. Director Paulsy, he also attends regularly the South Coast Traffic Safety Committee. Our, our meetings on a monthly basis, so if you want to speak to him. More about these things, more about connectivity, more about infrastructure, that's always another avenue you can speak with them, or be there next week too, Vic, Jen, Waikoloa. It's an opportunity to be there. Yes Patty?
I just thank you for doing that. Being on that was calls makes a big difference in quality of the meeting.
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna stop going because I was getting picked on a lot. Then James told me he'd start buying me beers.
And thank you Director, I mean, it's also an opportunity to meet with the Director and talk about the, the county roadways. But we also have some of these issues at our state highways, there's this overlap and sometimes there's this, you know. Uncertainty about what is the state highway, where does it end? And so sometimes we, we often actually have um. Our district engineer for state highways on the call as well and can answer some of those questions and help with that.
But the more people from Waimea that show up, the better, because that'll drawn out the Waikoloa village.
Thank you Director, really appreciate your time.
Thank you all.
So we'll kind of, we'll kind of close up here with just the last bit of information here, so I just want to thank everyone for joining us here this evening. Mahalo Nui to our presenters for being here. For taking the time to update our viewers, our community members and being a part of this conversation going forward. I thank your viewers online. Uh, and attendees here in Tutu Sound, joining us here, grateful for your support as always. And Mahalo Nui, of course, to Tutu's house for opening this space to us and the community. You're also welcome to revisit, to watch these recordings, have your leisure upon our Facebook page or YouTube channel. Um, just an announcement for next month's meeting. We'll be meeting with Senator Richards and Representative Tarnus. In person here, that's our, our, our goal is to be with them in person, to hear about the work that he's carried out in the twenty twenty three legislative session. And then we'll also be joined by a special guest that evening, Lieutenant Governor Sylvia Luke will be joining us. To speak specifically about the, the Kaki, the Ready Kaki Initiative, so our, our preschool initiative you've probably been hearing a little bit about. And we look forward to having everyone join us that evening next month. And so uh, one other thing, Happy Mother's Day coming up pretty soon here. So I'd like to say all for the mothers in our community, so thank you very much. And on behalf of Waimea Community Association Board, I wish you good health, you well, aloha, thanks everyone.
Is the meeting gonna be a little bit longer, a six months?